The time is now seven oh six. I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of the Loney Village Board for April sixth, two thousand and sixteen. Please rise for the Plush of the Villages.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pastor Fettis, I believe you have the invocation. Sorry about the noise here.
Under God, the basis of our whole republic is that we're under God, and the rights of the people come from God, and our Lord Jesus Himself said that if you want to be first, you need to be a servant of all, because even Jesus Himself didn't come to be served, but to serve, and to give His life as a ransom for many. And so if the great Lord of the universe would come to serve, then it's not really humiliating to be called a public servant, because, you know, in some societies, you get to be the grand boss of everything. Here you serve. You serve God, you serve the people of the village. And so we pray that God will give you wisdom in doing that. Father, we do thank you for the great gift of your Son that we could celebrate again in this season of remembering his death and resurrection. And we thank you for the opportunities that you've given us in this nation, the rights that you've given to the people and governing authorities to affirm those rights. We thank you, Lord, for this body and for this village. We pray, Lord, that you will bless continuing discussion tonight as the official meeting begins, that you will bless the mayor and each of the trustees and all who are entrusted with responsibility, those in law enforcement and first responders and others who are involved in administration. Help them to be honest, to be transparent, to use the resources wisely and well, to have always the best interests of the people of this village at heart, and to realize that they will answer to you for how they conduct their affairs, and also that they can be encouraged and strengthened by you in doing these things. Bless this meeting tonight, and guide each one by your wisdom for Jesus' sake. Amen.
Mr. Clark, real call, please.
Trustee Holston, President Horn, Chief Pop, Chief Raisik, President Gonzalez, and Mr. Breyer's.
Okay. At this time, we're going to open the public agenda items on one. Any takers? Okay. No one for open the agenda items on one. Well, next we go to consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Let's remove something, item F three, five from the consent agenda.
Sir, which one?
It's the AP four.
To the bills, F five.
Okay. I'm sorry. Mr. Clark, can you? Okay, that's fine. So, F five, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda aside from F five?
Send it.
Second.
Holston, Raisik. Real call, please.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
And Horn?
Yes.
Do we have a consent, uh, discussion regarding F five?
Um, just a couple of questions, I think, just for clarification for my little head. On page number one for CDW Government for Electronics?
Okay.
Daryl isn't here, so...
Daryl's here.
Oh, hi, Daryl. You're hiding. Hello.
He was standing up.
Really, 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 you did.
CDW?
CDW Electronics, CDW Government for Electronics for 2012.
CDW, I believe that's for some drivers that we needed for the servers, the new server that we have in the village hall.
Okay, for drivers. And then Division eighty-four, website development?
Yes. Labor on Doug has a missing report that the website is being redesigned, moving some things around and getting it more user-friendly, as well as building, I guess, a business module onto the site, redoing the part. I believe that there were some, some issues with the way it looked, and it didn't compare to other municipalities, so we're trying to upgrade that a little bit.
Okay, we're going to have a whole lot more discussion on that. And who was the tech who was here, who billed us for $2,400?
Uh, I'm sorry, the...
Division eighty-four?
Division eighty-four.
Who was the tech that came and did the development?
Uh, Justin.
Thank you. We're going to have a lot more discussion on that.
Okay.
And then the last one is, and I'm sure, and maybe you just have never noticed, is Proven Business Systems?
That's our copiers.
For maintenance?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion about F five? I'll entertain a motion to approve item F five that was removed from the consent agenda.
Send it.
Second question?
Gonzalez and I think it's one.
Yeah.
Okay. Real call, please.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Chief Pop?
Yes.
So this is approval just by F five?
Correct, is the other one approved. Okay, thank you. Mr. Clark, do you have a report?
Um, just an update. I think last meeting, we were talking about drivers license renewal forms not being mailed out, and one of the trustees asked about emissions testing. And I found that if your license plate needs to be renewed, it does not have to be inspected. They will give you your license plates, but you have one year to finish that inspection. And the inspection sites, testing sites are still open. They just aren't having to act the forms. So it's kind of a gray area, but I suppose it'll be fixed when we get a budget.
Right.
In the state.
And I believe, just so everybody's aware, the vehicle registration, we oftentimes think of as our cars, chief one, motorcycle registrations come review typically at the same time as April, I believe.
Um, yeah, and everybody can look at the top of their registration. It'll have a registration number and a PIN code, so you can renew that online and then request that in your email for next year's renewal.
Yeah, but I, the point is, is we think about cars, but your trailers, your motorcycles, a lot of that actually all renew April.
Yes.
I think boats are the same way. I don't know if the DNR is doing anything different, if anybody has. But, I mean, those are all things to be aware of. So if you have, so he has a, you may want to consider, we're not hearing about it in the news, because it's not as well known, but something to think about. So if anybody has any watercraft or anything else, you may want to make sure that, if they need to be renewed before you hit the street, the water, or whatever else, please do so. And so that is going to be, how do you get that updated information, Mr. Clark, you're going, is that going to be, we're going to post it here as well, how to tell people how to get into that?
Well, I guess it's more of an enforcement issue, because if you get a new license plate and you don't have new emissions test, you have a year, what's explained to me, a year to get it done, but I don't know how the police department's handling that.
Typically, it's they want to renew the plate after emissions test, but fail to do this.
Sure. Okay. All right. Be aware. Thank you. Mayor's report. I don't believe I have, I don't believe I have anything at this time. I wanted to acknowledge, we have one of our residents is going to be going on a honor flight. He served in Korea. I don't know if it's actually the Korean War or not, but he's served in Korea, and he's going to be going on the honor flight, I believe it's next, next week. And he lives over in Gulf Coast. Sid?
Angelo Marcheski.
Okay. Was, was he actually in the Korean War, or did he just serve in Korea?
I'm not sure.
Okay. So, it's kind of neat to know that some of our heroes are being honored the way they are. And so it's pretty cool, so.
He was in service during the Korean War.
Okay.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I know he was in Korea, but I just didn't know if he actually served during the Korean War, or if it was just, you know, served, that happened to be where he stationed. So, all right. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may add to that, I've been involved with that honor flight organization. They actively look, when, when I took my father, who they were actively recruiting World War II era vets. So if you know any World War II era vets who have not gone to visit the memorial in DC, they are, they can get involved with that in, in the flight.
They be put on a list.
You're put on a list, yeah. It sounds like now they're expanding it to Korean era, Korean War era veterans as well. So if you know people from that conflict, who can get them on the list, too.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. The next item is discussion of two police squad cars, and the local police department is requesting to purchase two Dodge Durango all-wheel-drive squads to replace two older high-mileage squads. Purchase has been budgeted in 2015, '16 fiscal year, and the squads will be ordered through Thomas Dodge in Highland, Indiana. This will be made through the Southwest Council of Managers. The cost per vehicle is $27,597. I know that, as the mayor reminded me earlier, we had talked about the topics that would be in the meeting of the whole, it would be the board's option if we wanted to vote on that, in any of the year discussion and approval. So.
Just a quick discussion of, why can we not find somebody in Illinois to purchase this from other than Illinois?
If I can refer to the chief on that, I believe that, now, you had indicated that the, this has gone through the Southwest Conference of Mayors.
Yes.
They, where they do bids for various products. Salsaburban Co-op didn't include this particular product line, but another of our COGS had them, actually two of them had, had chief run through the details on that.
Uh, Thomas Dodge has dealerships in Illinois and Indiana. It specifically do the emergency vehicles out of the location in Indiana. Napleton is the dealership that deals with the SPC contracts. Napleton isn't offering a contract price on the Durango. The Durango otherwise would have been somewhere around $40,000. It's a pretty significant drop for a police service, that particular police service unit. The prices between SPC and Thomas Dodge are virtually identical on the other models that they offer, the Charger being one of them.
Preservation of the one in the Durango?
Uh, just for more room for the people that are in it. The cars are getting, you know, smaller as we go along, and the equipment is getting bigger. And, and by that, I mean, computer radios, we're going to be adding additional radios as we go into consolidation here into the future, and we need a little more space in those vehicles.
Are they, have you gotten to drive them? Are they as maneuverable as those Chargers?
They're not going to be, they're not going to be as nimble as a Dodge Charger's going to be, but they're specifically for police service, in this particular model. The benefit of having a six-cylinder Dodge versus going up to the Truck Series Expedition is, is that mileage is nineteen and twenty-seven on the Dodge, and it's about fifteen and twenty on the other vehicle. And our fleet numbers typically get reflected in that because the vehicles run for a long time, you know, long periods of time. So we opted for more room, a request for more room rather than for another pair of squad cars. The Dodge all-wheel-drive Chargers would have been just about at $25,000, and this is going to give us a little more room to use, some space in these vehicles. And for us, that's at a premium these days with computers and radios and radars and all the other things, AEDs and anything.
And you did actually have one of your officers make sure that they could?
Yeah, we did. We also did comparable, just so, you know, we could understand. The comparable is, is the headspace in the Durango thirty-nine point nine inches, and the headspace in an Expedition, which is the next size up, which we already had in service, is thirty-nine point six. So they're very comparable in size. Legroom was about two inches more in the Expedition than in Durango. And room-wise, obviously, the Expedition is a little bit bigger overall in cubic space, but it's also, there's also a fairly significant difference in how much we're going to spend on fuel. And one of the reasons we went to the Chargers is to save money on fuel. Mine clocked off, I think it was eighteen point two miles to the gallon in March, and right now, if I looked at my, my, because there's a fuel economy gauge in all these, it's closer to twenty. And that's significantly more than when I drove the CVPI, which was right at thirteen. So it's one of the reasons why we stepped away from that product and moved to what we did. And we've had really, you know, all warranty work has always happened on these vehicles so far.
And what year are the two vehicles that you're retiring?
Two thousand and three, and that vehicle has an exhaust manifold leak and the driver's side door falling off. And the two thousand and nine has had a blown-up transmission, and that vehicle has been out of service in the fleet for a while, about a couple of months now, because it's worth, it's not worth repairing yet. It would be worth less in sale than if we, if we spent $4,000 to fix it, we're going to get $2,500 back. And frankly, I don't want to spend that money.
And then the wrap for the vehicles, is that done in-house?
No, the wrap is, is done by graphics company, just more of a business.
I thought at one time we did our...
Everything, everything in prepping the vehicle is done in-house, but the graphics that we've never done, those are separate.
Okay.
This is in the budget?
Yes.
I'm comfortable making the motion.
Second. I'd like to discuss a little more, to, well, more, comment to the discussion. Chief, I wanted to compliment you guys, your force. I don't think, and I have to say this, this is not a police trap in this community. I have no vision that anything like that exists. But being retired, I drive the streets a lot during the day. And it seems to me that the boys are a lot busier than what I've seen in previous years. And I know that some of the revenue, if not all, from traffic violations, impound fees and things like that, do go towards these vehicles. And I just want to commend yous on the job you're doing. There may not be a lot of happy people, but they do speak. They're going to be all right, okay? There you go. End of comments.
We have a motion in a second.
What was the second?
Trustee Raisik. Just real quickly, if I can insert a question here. I don't know if it's you or, or DJ. Did the two vehicles that we're having significant issues with, do we need to put on the future agenda for them to be salvaged? Correct?
Of those two vehicles, a few things on them would be useful to beam up, as in new tires that we recently purchased.
So you can swap parts out?
They can easily be transferred up before we salvage. Anything, my recommendation would be that these days a lot of the, load over and do what you need to do with the bulk loads cars.
That's fine. But at some point, then, will be removing the two old ones entirely from the fleet?
Yeah, I would recommend the car with the broken transmission absolutely be salvaged, and the other one probably sale is what it was last.
Understood. Thank you. All right, real call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is for your review and consideration is a contract agreement for the purchase of an Alakin NP Street Sweeper through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative Program. Purchase has been budgeted through eligible MFT funds and will offset village costs. We would ask for authorization of purchase not to exceed $191,255 with financing through PNC Equipment Mieters.
Discussion. Mr. Administrator, when, when you say, I'm reading here from my notes, the purchase has been budgeted through eligible MFT funds, okay, would offset village, and would offset village costs, what do you, what do you mean by that? Would offset village costs?
Over a period of five years.
Over a period of five years, that those payments would be made through MFT funds and no costs from the corporate fund.
What we currently, DJ, if we had to hire...
Every year it's contracted four to seven dollars an hour, depending on how many you, how many you want to have to throw sweat.
And you're, and being you're not doing it as often as you'd like to in front of the press?
Absolutely not.
How often do you have it done?
Right now, currently, due to the flooding and stuff, I was only doing it once a year. And that was typically in the fall to get annual leaves and stuff off the gutter. So if we had winter storms, that debris would not block up the streets.
Who, who do you contract with?
The lowest bid I can get usually, yeah, the service application is usually the cheapest price I could get.
So you're not, you're not renting or anything from another village?
No, the only time I've ever gotten any assistance with another municipality that does not have one close or back to the Will County Highway Department, they were able to come to the parking lot here because of operations with Public Works and the Stone. You know, stuff would get dropped along the path. We didn't want anybody twisting an ankle. So every once in a while, I see when Will County Highway Department has it from here, from the other units that they use that in elsewhere, I bet I was able to get them to come in here and most of the parking lot, kind of on a handshake, thank you deal for it.
Are there any other villages or municipalities in the city that have them?
I guess there aren't a complete list of local municipalities that do have this. Some of them are different in the way that they're designed. Orland Park, so on and so forth, has truck-minded ones and bigger ones that do higher highway speeds, costs a little bit more. We didn't need anything like that. I think the max speed on this one is twenty, twenty-five miles an hour for our streets. But Mattson has one, Kankakee has three units, Bradley has one, Markham, Crestwood, Julia has ten units, Sherwood, Cal City, Lansing, Dalton, Alseth. A lot of, more of the communities up north than I'm reading now, but some of the southern area regions, they just don't have them. And it could be for various reasons, who knows why. But, you know, with our municipality investing $7 million in the road infrastructure, it was a kind of a planned, methodical choice to be able to maintain that infrastructure before it gets down into the storm drains. We could do it before parades, after parade, before events, spring, summer, fall, whenever it warranted, that we had any kind of cleanup duties to be able to take care of that. So we would kind of be pioneering the way down here in the South suburbs. And I'm sure, you know, other municipalities would probably won't have access to it if at all possible.
So is there a vacuum unit on there?
This isn't a vacuum unit. The vacuum units are a lot more money and kind of expel a big cloud of dust into the air. This is actually considered a broom and dustpan. It sweeps into a catch, into a conveyor belt hopper that collects it, and then that hopper then can be dumped into the size of our big international, goes up that high, a gate opens up, and it actually can dump that debris into the international, where we can go through it and decide if it's more roadstone, like you see in the springtime after we've plowed the streets. And we could possibly resurface, recycle that material into stone roads that we have around town, or Iroquois paving with the asphalt plant and take those fines and be able to use those for something. Or the leaves in the fall time, cleaning the buildings and the streets as far as that goes before it gets down into the storm catch basins and the drains for that maintenance, to prevent that.
If you had one of these, how often would you employ on the...
Currently, in working with Daryl, with the MFT expense, we're estimating probably out of the fiscal year, I would guess about thirty days, we would have a driver in there, or, I'm sorry, I take that back. Forty hours plus or minus, it just kind of would depend on how, how the training went. The Belgian offers free training for the mechanics to be able to service and prepare that, as well as free training in order to how to use that in timely fashion. So we were estimating about forty hours. It took the other company about two, three days to do the whole town when they came out and were hired. So I'm guessing spring, fall, after parades, so on and so forth, that number could probably be higher. It's just because we haven't used it and we're, we're not familiar with the process in here in town with us using it, how long it would be. So initially forty hours, it could be higher than that.
So the, the old company, they would, per their contract, they would sweep every, what, every residential street, or every...
Actually, they would only sweep every road that had a curb and gutter attached to it.
Okay.
Because then they could get that debris out of it, and it wouldn't risk anything. They would not clean the streets if residents raked leaves into the gutters. They would, you know, very picky about that in the fall. So there was kind of a list of stipulations as far as that, once we encourage residents to use the recycling program that they're already paying for in the Dodge contract. But for the most part, it was, I could get them to come to the parking lots here, I could get them to, you know, do various areas in the streets that needed it. They did Egyptian, or I'm sorry, Eagle Fair before we had it final coated, and that road was falling apart, and he was out there for a day in itself, just trying to clean the stone off of that. But with us, we could do all the streets that weren't improved. We could be able to custom tailor where we needed to clean up those roads at.
So you're, so you're saying the streets without curb and gutter, you can...
Old parts of town, correct.
You can utilize this?
Absolutely, absolutely. To get any surface debris that could be on that.
Surface debris, define what that means.
Road pieces, chunks, maybe some cracked seal material that's peeling up, that could, you know, take that off of there, break down to somebody threw a garbage bag of, you know, the local fast food establishment onto the street. And if, if they could get close enough for the wheels to pick it up and take it, it would do that. So he wouldn't have to stop to pick that up. It won't blow it into a million pieces and cause it to be, you know, fine particles. It's, it's a very gentle sweep, you know, and pull up, and you can adjust the downforce accordingly, depending on how the street is and was and the condition. It contours very well to any roads that are uneven, where the vacuum, you have a, you have to have almost a smooth surface for the vacuum to work. Any road crown or any drop-off points really don't get hit because it doesn't have that sweep action, so.
Thank you. You have a discussion?
I just wanted to, do they have any kind of a program, DJ, leased own or anything like that, where we would, I don't know if we'd save money that way, but...
In essence, that would be, that's what we would be doing, going through PNC, because the last payment's a dollar, and then we would own it. So that's kind of how it worked with the Jetter Truck when we purchased that, it was kind of leased to own. We did, over the past, I'd say, year that I was working on this, when I first put together the road program, and started talking with the trustee, if he was here, he would be able to back up on this. We were looking at used units, and used units ranged from the one that you had to put all kinds of money into, to refurbished units that were about $150,000. But they were older models with higher engine hours and higher engine life, you know, and come with their quirks. So when the state bid process was looked into with the new developments, with the newer machines and the new way that they have their warranties, there's a lifetime warranty on the actual hopper from rotting out, it seemed to make sense, since we were using MFT to be able to help purchase this, to go with a newer unit that doesn't have all those quirks. They've redesigned the cab, so there's no blind spots. As you're looking through, it's almost a tractor cab, where the old ones, you kind of felt like they were in a tank. They were big and boxy, and they had a window that bubbled out where a guy would stick his head in to look through. So these had improved visibility. Part of the bid was a rear camera, so you could see, you know, without having to try to look over the unit, and all the other redesigned safety features that made it very easy. and the new way that they have their warranties, there's a lifetime warranty on the actual hopper from rotting out. It seemed to make sense since we were using MFT to be able to help purchase this to go with a newer unit that doesn't have all those quirks. They've redesigned the cab so there's no blind spots. As you're looking through, it's almost a tractor cab where the old ones, you kind of felt like they were in a tank. They were big and boxy and they had a window that bubbled out where a guy would stick his head in to look through. So these had improved visibility. Part of the bid was a rear camera so you could see, you know, without having to try to look over the unit. And all the other redesigned safety features that made it very easy to take care of maintenance and not have any future issues along with the diesel, low emission diesel engine, that's it, so.
When we purchased the truck that can vacuum and or pressure that line through, are we making payments on that right now too?
Uh, yes, we're finishing that up. I think we're in the, almost the last year for that, or second to last year for that. That's coming out of a water revenue, that's a different fund for that. And that was to actually take care of our infrastructure. We've been doing that. One of the things that will help alleviate some of the wear and tear on that machine that cleans the catch basins out and the sanitary laterals is by getting the debris off before it gets in there. And that's what this machine would be doing, would be maintenanceing all that before it got into there and then take the wear and tear off of that machine.
DJ, could you give me an idea here, just since we're on this discussion here? When we got the back, in the, in the Jetter, Jetter. At that time it was somewhat of an unknown because we'd never owned one before. We knew what we were paying previously to third party that.
Sure.
Your estimate now, because then we were on Suburban, your estimate now, has it redeemed its value to us?
Oh, yeah. I can't even quantify how much that thing has saved us in time or money, labor hours, man hours. Being able to, we found new ways to be able to use this machine, that, the Jetter truck machine that we never even thought possible when we were initially looking into it. Not just for the simple fact of we were already paying somebody else to maintain their infrastructure twice what we were making. The payments on this thing.
So now if they have a working B box or something, you can jetter it down instead?
Instantly, instantly, we've been able to ratify issues and just take care of things at a moment's notice. Even in the winter time, we've been able to use that machine in operations. In fact, we had it out in rain today. So the list goes on and on. Standard Equipment, who is also providing this Elgin, should the board choose to accept this proposal from governmentally, is stood by that machine and actually did about a $20,000 repair under warranty for us when one of the fans for that unit let loose and it broke apart. They were able to go back to the vector company that provided the machine for us under a, an old recall that they had for it. They fixed it, replaced the engine housing cradle fan. And they did that without even telling me they were doing it. They said, bring us the unit and let us look at it. We got it back, it was fixed. The village agreement helped us in using their machine in the interim while that one was being fixed and saved us a whole lot of money. So Standard Equipment has a good reputable name, they've helped the village out, more ways than I can help. So I'm pretty confident that with them backing the Elgin name and the sweeper, if we ever run into any issues, they would stand by it as well, so.
Is there a street, street for schooled for new drivers?
There actually is and Elgin's going to provide that service free for us to make sure that our guys are trained. As well as when we can, then even as much as, as, you know, standard would love to have the maintenance and the repair on it because we employ in-house technician, they will teach us how to fix it. And we'll go through their class and their training so that we're up to date on everything. So it's a pretty good, pretty unique deal with that, so. I wish the Fords would, or the Dodges would do that.
All the bricks.
Yeah, but they, but they don't, so luckily we haven't had too many issues with those.
Darryl, I have a couple more questions then too, for about the finance part of it.
Sure.
And it's being 100% paid for by MFT funds?
I don't know if we could pay for it 100% by MFT funds because we would have to, based on a five-year, five-year amortization schedule, we'd probably get about $12,000 a month for MFT funds. The actual expense per month would be about $20,000 to $23,000.
So $8,000 a month. How much currently is in, have we been paid by MFT at all this year?
Yeah, we have. I'm sorry, a quarter, I'm sorry, it, it is a quarter. Right, 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 semi-annual payments. I'm sorry.
What is that?
The 20, 2033 is a semi-annual payment, so only twice a year. So I apologize for that, yeah.
So a portion of it would come out of village funds. How much currently is in our MFT fund? Do we have it like?
I thought I heard the administrator say there was nothing there currently to back for. There was, there was 3.
396 or something like that, yeah.
396 is the total now?
Total current balance.
So worst case scenario, yes, there is money in there now. So what if we were getting, not getting paid again by MFT funds and stuff? I just want to make sure it's all there and that the village isn't incurring all the costs, but.
Sure. So if we don't, do not receive any more MFT funds? I don't believe that we, we wouldn't receive MFT funds. I think the, the worst case scenario would be that they would withhold for a time period. But those MFT funds are due to the village and would be paid.
And even so, if there's a balance that high, then we'd be okay for a while?
Yes.
Provided we don't keep making payments out of the MFT funds.
Sure.
That's amortized over how many years?
Five years.
So it's not worth not buying a $190,000 thing right now, it's amortized over five years?
Correct.
$20,000 semi-high annual payment, $12,000 of it of which is coming out of MFT.
And just for clarity too on that, even after we pay the unit off, we can still keep charging the MFT to recoup those purchases that we are fronting, front loading on the payment, on their financing. Knowing that we're going to be keeping the equipment longer than five years. We've got units that are 94s that we still have full engine hours and mileage. We'll be able to recoup those costs through MFT in the years to come because it's still an ongoing expense because we're taking care of our infrastructure. So in theory, it would pay for itself. And since this is a planned budget for 2016, 2017 fiscal year, what I've done in talking with Darryl on the budget is the 15, 16 year, I budgeted $7,000 for a new vehicle in the road and bridge fund where this would be coming out. And for the 16, 17 fund, I'm not budgeting a vehicle to come out of that fund to cover an MFT portion of the payment and the, the back pay. So in hindsight, we're going to save the money that I would put towards street sweeping as well as the new vehicle purchase. So it's actually going to free a lot more of the budget to be able to utilize in other areas under road and bridge, be able to improve that, so.
Okay.
That's all, just thinking like this is more little higher sticker price than that gear you wanted.
Do I make a motion that we buy it?
Second.
Holston, Hough? We'll call.
Trustee Holston? Oh, I'm sorry, not to exceed 191, fine. I should have banned that to make.
Price as quoted.
191,225. Yes. Trustee Horne? Yes. Hough?
Yes.
Raisik?
No.
And Gonzalez?
No.
Sure, thank you. Just anything else?
That's all, thank you.
All right. Before we go to the officials' report or anything else, which I know is going to be something, we just had committee meeting. I see we have our most fantabulous labor attorney here. And to minimize our cost, I would entertain a motion to go to executive session for issues as described under, oh, executive session, collective bargaining, personnel. Boy, those are the only two issues in discussion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Horne and Raisik, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Horne?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Shell return.